All right. Okay, call to order for the Conservation Commission's December sixth, two thousand and twenty-three special meeting. In attendance are Bob Shabbett, Jackie Coolig, Patty Phillips, and Kathy Demers. Item one on our agenda is to discuss the proposed timber harvest on the Conservation Eastman area located on Wilford Farms LLC property, map twenty-one slash zero two-two. All right, so. Um, Jackie, Patty, and I were out there last week with Austin Harmon from Hall. And we walked the Conservation Eastman area. Um, and maybe, maybe it would be good to have Jackie start, maybe you could describe what we saw out there, Jackie, just in terms of the forest itself on the Eastman?
Uh, sure, um, so the whole property had been harvested. I think they said, um, like eight or ten years ago. Um, and they did a selective harvest at that point, so there's still a pretty dense canopy. Um, a lot of oak in the overstory, but a diversity of species, uh, fairly good quality. For, you know, around Wellington, so. And pretty, pretty healthy in general, the, uh, Eastman around the wetland had a lot of ash that were in decline. Um, and so those, some of those were being proposed for removal, but leaving some for wildlife trees. And I guess, uh, so based on the Eastman, um, specifications, there's only gonna be a thinning allowed in the Eastman area. So we talked with Austin about, um, kind of what trees he was thinking of taking and, um, percent of the canopy to be, uh, removed. I believe he said about thirty percent, I, I have to look back in his, um, narrative to see exactly what he said for percent, um, but we did talk about, uh, what species to encourage, um, and considering, um, thinning is all that will be allowed going into the future. Um, won't be able to open up the canopy very much to allow some of the more, um, shade intolerant species to grow, like for instance, oak needs a lot of light to germinate and thrive when it's very young, although it can, you know, have more shade when it's reached the canopy level. So we talked about, um, trying to encourage things like, uh, sugar maple, there's a lot of beech on that property, um, hemlock, those are some of the most shade tolerant species that were, uh, there. But then also leaving a diversity of other species, you know, for wildlife habitat and just, uh, general. Species diversity into the future. Did you want me to touch on anything else, uh, right now, Kathy?
Um, maybe just talk a little bit about the wetlands that we saw, Jackie, like if you. While you're doing that, I can share this air, so we can kind of, um, show on the map where the wetlands were, can you see, everyone see that? Okay, go ahead, Jackie, sorry.
Yep, um, yeah, I can't see it, but.
Oh, so sorry.
No, no, it's, it's my computer, but, um. Anyway, so yeah, the center of the Eastman area has, um, a large wetland. Um, not a lot of standing water in the let, wetland, um, it's more just saturated soils, very rocky. Um, like hummocks and low depressions, but you know, smaller little, um, pools. And then a stream flows out of that, I believe, to the south, uh, east. Um, and that's where they're proposing a stream crossing with one of their skid trails where they had previously crossed. The approaches to the, that stream crossing are a little steeper than the other one, which is out on the town-owned property. So, do, um, you know, we talked about, um, doing, um, corduroy, which is basically, um, putting pole, pole-sized trees down on the road perpendicular to the, um, direction of traffic. And that will help slow down any erosion and, uh, protect the soil underneath from, um, rutting primarily, and then he, in, um, Austin's narrative, he talked about putting, a portable bridge mat down, which is basically really large timbers that are tied together and set over top of those poles. Um, but in, parallel to the, um, direction of traffic. So that should really protect that crossing pretty well. Let's see, um, there's also the vernal pool, uh, is that on the map you're showing, Kathy, the vernal pool?
Yes, I have the new map that Austin sent that shows the pool up in the, um, western boundary.
Right, okay, yeah, so that, um, we visited as well, and there was, uh, standing water there. Um, so it certainly seemed like a vernal pool to us, um. A lot of blueberry in there, which was interesting, which Kathy pointed out, um, larger blueberry plants. And then the other wet, or stream crossing was out towards, uh, Meadow Lane, which would be on the proposed, um, right-of-way through the town's property.
Yeah, I'm trying to think if I still have that, yep, right here. Um, I'm showing it now, Jackie, so here's Meadow, the end of Meadow Lane, everyone. And then this is the old woods road that they used in the past to get up to the Eastman, you know, and to do the harvest on the property. So this area is what Jackie's talking about right now.
Yeah, so, so that crossing, um, the topography is very flat, and it's just kind of a trickle of a like a seep, wetland seeping out of one side, not really in a direct channel crossing the road and then kind of seeping over onto the other side. But the road is, seemed very stable there, so Austin had proposed, um, kind of cutting a more defined channel for the stream to flow through, and then doing a similar, um, pole toward or corduroy. And then the bridge mats on top of that, uh, which seemed, um, very reasonable, um, to me.
Okay, great. So those are the areas that we walked with Austin and discussed in terms of the harvest. And let me go back, um, to his narrative. So I'm pulling up his narrative, Jackie, where he talked about, uh, and maybe I can just very briefly kind of highlight some of those things. Um, the harvest goal was basically to sustain a long-term forest that cannot allow a heavy timber harvest per the Conservation Eastman, proposing a forest thinning of thirty to forty percent of basal area. Um, Jackie, maybe you can explain what basal areas to everybody?
Uh, basal area is just, it's a measure of density, um, but it's basically the percent of the canopy that's gonna be removed, basal area is truly, if you were to cut all of the, um, trees in an acre down at breast height and measured the, um, the area of the stumps. At the top of the stumps, that would be the square footage of basal area per acre. Looking at, you know, if, if you saw ninety square feet of basal area per acre, most people wouldn't know what that means at all, but it's, um, a useful tool for foresters, or so.
Would you say?
In our, in our case, you know, just think of it as a percent of the total, uh, canopy.
Okay, would you say the canopy was pretty much closed at this point?
Um, yeah, I, I'd be interested to see what his measure of basal area came up, because I don't, I don't know if he did a a cruise to determine what the basal area was, but, um, yeah, it did seem, um, fairly closed in. So, yeah, I think suitable for, for a har, you know, a light harvest.
Okay, and he thought, i- in his narrative, he said that, um, the harvest that was done before was successful in establishing and releasing plentiful natural regeneration throughout most of the property. Did you, I, I didn't ask you this when we were out there, but did you feel that there was noticeable regeneration out there, because I was.
See, um, definitely not in the Eastman area, there wasn't a lot of regeneration. Um, there were some areas that we walked through, that there was more like oak and other, uh, hardwood regeneration. But there was a lot of beech, which is one of those shade tolerant species. That was most of what I saw, and then there's some, um, sugar maple regeneration, which maybe got released during that last harvest, but did not, the seed did not get established after that harvest. So that was another, you know, shade tolerant species that was already kind of just, um, stagnant in the understory. And maybe got a little bit of a boost after the last harvest.
Okay, great, and then, um, he goes on to say that they would target unhealthy, risk-prone, and poorly formed trees. Retain others for species diversity and wildlife habitat purposes. They would promote shade, uh, intermediate and shade tolerant species included, as you said before, but not limited to sugar maple, red maple, yellow birch, sweet birch, and American beech. And again, the reason was to sustain a healthy long-term forest that could not allow a heavy, uh, timber harvest is upheld by the CE. With that being said, other shade intolerant species, and you mentioned like oak, would that include things like, um, hickory as well?
Oak and hickory are more like mid-tolerant species, um, it's more so when they're first getting established that they need a lot of light. Um, but they're considered more mid-tolerant, um, intolerant species, um, typically like, uh, white pine, uh, paper birch, poplar, kind of the things you see coming up in old fields.
Oh, okay, all right, and, um, then they go on to say that, um, in the mid-story and overstory and classified as co-dominant and dominant in terms of tree height to the relative canopy will be retained for species diversity and overall wildlife habitat purposes. All existing den and nest trees will be left unharmed to further sustain wildlife habitat. Most existing dead snags and some white ash will be left to promote habitat for sapro xylec, is that how you say that? Species? Those are insect species which require dead wood, is that it? For one or more of their stages of life?
I, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I, when I looked at that word, because it was new to me, um, so they're going to retain most of the existing dead snags and some white, white ash trees, and my understanding from reading, um, sapro xylec species were things like insects and funguses which require dead wood for one or more stages of their life cycle, so that provides food sources for birds and other, uh, wildlife. So that's why they would leave those dead snags as well, you know, as far, and, and obviously there's gonna be holes and cavities and such in them that can be used for nesting and resting and so on. Um, some trees may be, uh, well, girdled, effectively killing the tree and left standing to promote some standing dead wood in applicable areas. So I, I imagine if there wasn't enough existing dead snags, they would do that, is that what you would think?
Yeah, I don't see that, um, too common, but, um, but yeah, they might, might do that if there weren't enough existing ones, and I'm sure they would, um, locate them away from skid trails, so they're not a hazard to, you know, humans and other people using the trails.
Yeah, that was one of the things he did mention when we were out there, is that they were concerned about some of the trees because the soils were so thin, um, the roots were very, uh, shallow. And there were some, there were some actual blowovers we did see when they were walking in that area. Um, he said that was one of their concerns, because peo, you know, he, the owner and friends and such go out and they hunt there, so they were concerned about some of those trees they could just topple over. And then the last paragraph, he talks about the, um, stream crossing, and basically it's what, um, Jackie did say, uh, in terms of using the corduroy and the timber bridge mats. And the skid trails, including the stream crossing and other bare mineral soils exposed areas will be seeded and hayed as needed post-harvest. During the next feasible time to seed and hay, so, you know, in the spring, um, when, you know, they can throw seed out there and, and cover it up with straw, is when they would do that. Water bars may be implemented on the skid trails as necessary post-harvest, so if there's any erosion, uh, they would go back out there and, and do that. And he's proposing that they'll retain a twenty-five to thirty-foot buffer from the edges of the wetlands, the vernal pool, and the stream within the CE area. No trees will be cut within this buffer, but some slash and woody debris, debris may be left within it. So, if you look at the inland wetland regs, just so you know, basically, um, harvests can be conducted within wetlands. Not with, not in the stream corridor, or, um, we, uh, vernal pool buffer, but they can be allowed within wetlands. They're actually proposing here to not cut in the wetlands at all, and also to leave a twenty-five to thirty-foot buffer from those wetlands. So even stricter than the inland wetlands, uh, rules for the wetland itself. Vernal pools in inland wetlands regulations specifies a fifty-foot buffer. And they're only talking about a twenty-five to thirty-foot buffer here in what they're proposing, so. Um, Jackie and I were talking and thought that it would be important to be consistent with inland wetlands rules. And recommend that around the vernal pool that you increase that buffer to fifty feet.
I would agree with that.
Okay, Jackie, are you still, that's still something you're in agreement with as well?
Yeah, yeah, I think it just is important to let Austin know, because he might not be aware of Wellington-specific regulations, but really he'd be required to do that. Um, whether he knows it or not, I guess.
Yeah, the thing is, interestingly enough, when I've seen inland wetlands discussing things, I don't always see them, um, be very, well, things change, right, it depends on people on the commission. But anyway, I haven't ever seen anybody say that, so that's interesting. I didn't realize it was fifty feet until I read the regs myself. Um, and they're relatively new, too, I should say that, just a few years old, as I understand it. And then, in the inland wetlands regulations, for the streams, they require a thirty-foot buffer, but they do allow up to fifty percent canopy removal between the fifteen and the thirty-foot mark. And again, here, what they're proposing is they would leave a twenty-five to thirty-foot buffer and not do any harvest. So again, they're proposing something even more strict than what inland wetlands requires. So, a- again, I, should we just kind of say we support what they're proposing up to a thirty-foot, twenty-five to thirty-foot bu- buffer from the edges of the stream?
I would, and just make sure that they go a little bit further out to fifty feet around the vernal pool.
Okay, all right.
I mean, that, that's, that's my take on it.
Okay, all right. If anybody, by the way, hears any bells ringing while we're talking, let me know, it might be Austin trying to get in late or someone else trying to get in. I can't always see somebody's name come up, especially if I'm sharing a screen. Is there any other maps or information you want me to put up as, as we're discussing this? So there would be a fifty-foot buffer here around the vernal pool. Proposing another twenty-five to thirty-foot buffer around this wetland. And, um, the stream crossing, and the stream itself, which is here. And I believe this is, you would say, you would classify this more as an intermittent stream, Jackie?
Uh, yes, the, the one, um.
The one that goes from the wetland and then toward the crossing?
Yeah, most likely, it didn't seem to me like it would be running very, very often, but, um.
When I looked.
Either, either way, um, he's proposing using the bridge mats. Should be kind of going above and beyond what's recommended for intermittent streams.
Okay, and also, they're saying, you know, twenty-five to thirty-foot buffer here. They're not asking to cut within that buffer at all. According to what he's saying, so we would just support that i- in our recommendations?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I would say that, um, or the narrative, um, we could recommend to the inland wetlands commission, but also maybe speak with Austin and make sure he's aware of what the, um, requirements are with inland wetlands, just, you know, if if he does need to make some small modifications, you know, and he, it makes sense to cut within that buffer in some spots. Then he will have the option to do that.
Okay, all right, I'll let him know, and so in our recommendations, we would just be consistent with what inland wetlands says in terms of a buffer along the stream as well.
Yeah, the, the state has, um, just slightly different recommendations along streams that depends on the grade. So depending how steep it is next to the stream, um, like potential for erosion, that uh, determines the width of the filter strip or buffer that they recommend, so. It's probably, um, gonna be pretty similar to what the state is recommending anyways.
Okay, and when we were in this area, we were looking at the stream from this side over here as well. My recollection is this wasn't very steep in terms of going down to the stream itself. Was that your recollection? There wasn't a lot of steepness, um, in, you know, for the
The stream coming out of the wetland.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, I'm pointing to it and talking as if you can see it again.
That's right, yeah, I mean, there was, the, the approaches to this crossing, um, were, you know, so, somewhat steep, but, um, you know, compared with the other first crossing that we looked at, but, um, but not, yeah, I don't think it, it should be an issue with what he has proposed.
Okay, good. All right, um, a couple other thoughts I had, and certainly if anybody else had some other thoughts. And I, I was just reading a couple of things before our meeting, um, about snags, and the Connecticut Deep Wildlife Division has a handout called Snags for Wildlife, it's on their website as well. And it said that you should leave all snags within a hundred feet of wetland or riparian areas. So I was wondering if that would be something we should also be recommending?
I think, um, it seemed like Austin was intending to leave as many snags as possible, other than those uh, close by to the skid trails, uh, for safety. I forget what exactly it said in his narrative about leaving wildlife trees, but I think it said it as many as.
He, he said most existing, then, he, he used the term most existing dead snags and some white ash trees will be left. So you're saying, y- your feeling was when we discussed it, was he was pretty much gonna leave them all, except if they were hazardous along the skid trails?
Right, yeah, that was the impression I got. And yeah, to say to leave all of them, just kind of puts, um, yeah, put, might put them in a sticky situation as far as safety for the, uh, along with trails, and also for the, um, machine operator, sometimes it just makes sense to take them down.
Oh, okay, good, yeah, good, good that you said that. Um, the, uh, deep also suggests a minimum of one fifteen-inch um, diameter at breast height or greater den tree should also remain per acre. Should we be that specific about leaving a lar, the, some larger trees? Because I'm just not sure if they're going to be kind of targeting the larger diameter trees during this harvest.
Um, it, are, it says specifically den trees?
Yeah, it says, um, a minimum of one fifteen-inch diameter at breast height or greater den tree. Um, do you think they're talking about something that's already considered a den tree, like it has a cavity noted in it?
Yeah, that's typically what I would consider a den tree, something that already has a cavity.
All right, and he did say.
That would probably fall within the snags that, um, he was intending to leave. And a lot of times also, the, the existing cavities, the quality, um, would not be great anyways, so they wouldn't be as desirable of, of a tree to remove.
Ah, okay, good, all right, and then we, one other thing we talked about that wasn't in his narrative when we were out there is because we didn't see very many softwood trees, um, you know, pine, hemlock. He, he did mention he would try to leave most of the softwood trees, maybe we can just add that to the recommendations, just so it's on paper?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, and then, um, how about leaving tops and slash, um, on the ground?
Yeah, I, I believe the, um, inland wetlands commission has a, um, a height, um, minute, uh, maximum height you can leave the slash. I believe he said he would leave slash, they're planning to leave most of the slash on site, um, just below the whatever the height recommendation or requirements are.
Okay, and because they, um, they're gonna be leaving mostly slayed shade tolerant trees, that means they would probably target, um, more mature oak, hickory, cherry, those kinds of things as well. Do we want to ask them to leave several larger, um, more sun-loving trees? Maybe opening up the canopy a little bit more around them? Or, you know, if they're already mature enough and in the canopy, just because they, they're such good mass producers. You know, oak, hickory, and cherry for, for wildlife, do we want to ask them to leave several, or again, am I getting too particular?
I, I think that they're, eh, when they're going in and harvesting, they're gonna leave some, uh, trees for seed. I think that's in their preview, just to looking down the road. You know, where is everything gonna come from? Well, they've gotta leave some of the big trees. Otherwise, that, I mean, you know, pretty soon you're gonna be relying on the birds to bring those heavy seeds into the area, which isn't, uh, very productive.
Yeah, I, I think he had already mentioned in his narrative about leaving co-dominant, um, existing trees, like the oak and hickory. Um, and most, mostly what was there in that, um, class are, are definitely large enough and should be productive enough mass producers. I don't, I don't know that we need to s- say it again in, in a different way, because it sounds like he's already planning to do that.
Yeah, I mean, I thought he was really, um, very interested in trying to, you know, cooperate and, and do what was right for that part of the forest based on the Conservation Eastman. So, okay, I, again, I, thank you for the feedback, you know, I didn't know how specific we should be in our recommendations, or basically just kind of, um, bless what he's saying, and adding the fifty-foot in around the vernal pool. And then making sure that he's complying with the buffer around the stream.
Yeah, I, I have a question for you, Jackie. When it comes to, uh, slash. Because of the increased population of the deer and how they browse on the young trees. Uh, I know everybody wants to cut the stuff down to like three feet or something. But, eh, in, in this particular situation, would we be better leaving the slash higher to better protect, I mean, more of a so it runs interference with the deer for their penetration into the area for their foraging?
Yeah, I mean, uh, yeah, I think a lot of folks do try to, you know, leave, leave things a little more jagged for protecting young regeneration. There's not a ton of existing regeneration to protect, uh, there, like I said, the beech is the main thing, uh, in that, you know, bra, under that browse line. So, I mean, a- and I, I don't remember what exactly inland wetlands commission requires for the height. But we could, we could mention, you know, in our letter, just, um, recommending leaving some slash around existing regeneration for, to protect from deer browse.
Yeah, but, eh, just, just a thought. I mean, when I'm out in the woods, after the leaves come out. I mean, I see quite a few deer and sometimes there's five, six, seven, eight of them together. And uh, you know, that's in a, in, in a fairly good sized area, that's still a lot of pressure on the. On the new, on the uh, new trees that are trying to establish.
Yeah.
Uh huh.
Yeah, one thing in this area is because only thinning is allowed. There's never really going to be a lot of regeneration and it's probably. Most of it is probably going to be eaten by the deer, but hopefully the neighboring piece of property. Um, will have enough regeneration.
Yeah.
That, that they can, some of them can make it through.
Yeah.
And especially with the, the other neighboring property, um, there's a harvest going on. On uh, some Becker property next door to this property. And they're quite heavy, so that, you know, there's some potential for a, a lot more regeneration there.
Yeah, okay, now, I, I just wanted to touch on that.
What, what we're proposing in the end, will this still be healthy for the forest, what they're doing? For long term?
But what, what are you uh, asking exactly?
Um, when you don't cut heavier. Like, where they're doing more of a thinning, will this leave the forest pretty healthy for the shade? Uh, loving.
Tolerant species, um, you know, that's what they like, so it's.
Yeah.
It'll be, um, yeah, it's just a matter of which species you're promoting.
Okay.
Certainly you can select the, the healthiest and um, best form trees to remain and. Yeah, have just a healthy forest, but a different structure.
Okay. The other thing that we did see as we were coming in, so when we came in from Meadow Lane and we walked down the existing woods road. That's on town property, um, there are some invasives that are. Starting to grow along the edges of that woods road, and then you come out into a, a larger open, what was. Probably a very large field a while ago, but it's really. Pretty heavily invaded now by non-native species, um, and that was another concern, I think, we had was. They're gonna be coming back and forth through that field area with some of the logging equipment. And um, we didn't want to, you know, have a lot of things spreading into the easement. Um, with what we're proposing, um, by ha- by having more of a thinning, not opening up things so much. Be more likely to deter some of those invasives from, from growing?
I think so.
Yeah, it certainly should uh, decrease uh, light is helpful and also there's probably gonna be fewer songbirds coming in with. Seeds, um, just because there's not as much of an understory food source.
Uh huh, okay, all right, good. And then the, um, the last thing I wanted to add into our recommendations was about flagging. We did talk to Austin about flagging. Um, so for our sidewalk, he did put up some uh, blue flags for wetlands and some yellow flags for the CE boundary. The conservation easement boundaries were supposed to be marked with permanent markers. The last time they did the logging, it's actually in the conservation easement agreement. And also the agreement that Hull had with the town. Um. Back ten years ago was that they were going to put up permanent markers on the easement, so there's none there at this point. So, we did talk about flagging during the harvest. That they would continue to have yellow flags for the CE boundary and also blue flags for the wetlands on the CE. And then once the harvest was over, that they would put up permanent easement markers. Um, and we had some from the commission that I did give to Austin. Um, to be able to use their round markers that say conservation easement Town of Wellington on them. And, and he was very agreeable to doing that, but I, I think we should put that in our recommendation, so that that's just something else that's. You know, kinda holds their feet to the fire in the end.
I'd agree.
Okay. Any other questions or thoughts about what to put in the recommendations? I certainly can draft some, the recommendations up and send them out to everybody. For feedback, final feedback, and then I can um, finalize them and send them over to. They'll go to inland wetlands and um, cause. My understanding is um, Austin's gonna try to get his application in for the next. Inland wetland meeting, which I believe is the eighteenth of this month. Um, so our, our recommendations would be in their hands before then. And then he'll have to go to planning and zoning, once he gets approval for the general harvest. On all of the property by inland wetlands, he'll have to go to planning and zoning and ask permission to have some. You know, the forestry activity on the easement area. And he will also have to go to the board of selectmen to discuss the right of way over the town property. So if we have everything put together, you know, under one recommendation, I can send it to all three, you know, the two. Uh, commissions in the one board.
Are you gonna include that stream clo- crossing closer to Meadow Lane in our recommendations, um, as far as? Um, a similar um, bridge mat setup to the other stream clo- crossing?
Yeah, good question, Jackie. So, um, yes, I'd like to put it all in one, you know, list of recommendations, so. Would you say um, use of corduroy or temporary uh, timber bridge mats in the area where there's that? Uh, pooled water on that existing woods road?
Yeah, that's where I was talking about.
Okay. So I can put that in our recommendations for sure. And.
Yeah.
When I send this around, I, please, nobody be afraid to uh, make comments or, you know, um. I'll, I'll send it as a word document that you can write on, basically, you know, you can. Type over stuff, write in red, whatever, and send it back to me. And um, you know, if my wording doesn't sound good, Jackie, with something, please, you know, feel very free to correct it. And same for everybody else. All right, any other uh, comments, questions about that? Okay, um, second agenda item is to discuss. Um, our monitoring visit of the two town-owned open space parcels off of Meadow Lane. Which includes map sixteen lot thirty, thirty-five and map sixteen lot thirty-nine. Um, again, Jackie, do you wanna start and just kinda give a, a little bit of an overview and I'll take notes?
Sure, um, yeah, so we went uh, into the property uh, from. The corner adjacent to the um, Wilford Farms property. Um, I guess it's on the, the north side of the house lots. Um, so many of the, the li- the property lines going around those three house lots. Are undefined, um, we weren't able to find um, boundary markers there. Uh, but the whole western boundary is well marked with um, barbed wire, stoned walls and. Iron pins, um, and I had put some flagging there previously. Um, uh, so as we got to that back boundary, um, we noticed that the. I think it's the Becker property uh, that's being harvested next to the Wilford Farms property. Um, also comes down along the town-owned property, um, so we were, were able to see that they were observing the boundary line there. Um, they had put up some additional flagging, uh, and had. Um, this looked like they're, they're still working on that harvest. Uh, actually on my way out, I noticed. Logging machinery, I think on Cole's Road, I think that was the access road for that area. Um. Uh, let's see, so, yeah, we walked the boundaries, we um, kinda discussed possible. Um, management options for that property, um. It was my opinion that, that the forest seemed in fairly good condition, fairly healthy, um, and considering the. Adjacent harvesting going on, it would be a good idea to leave. A denser canopy in that area and, and not consider a harvest right now. Um. So, yeah, I think that's it for, what I have to say for the monitoring.
Okay. The only thing I would add to that is that maybe we might want to go back in at some point. And put up some boundary markers, especially along those ba- back lots to the house lots. Um, maybe consider trying to do the best we can or. Being conservative and at least putting the boundary marker, something up there, so that if there's new owners and such too.
Right, yeah, I think, so we were using Kathy's um, phone app, which um. You know, you can get approximate boundaries um, from that, but it seemed like once we did find actual markers. They were not in line with what was on the app, so it might be a little tricky to, to get approximate boundaries. Uh, unless we were able to find any corners.
Uh huh. Okay, and the um, one other thing I was gonna add is that. We did find, it, we weren't sure of one of the boundaries, it would have been the more northern boundary of the last house lot. Um, closest to the Wilford Farm property.
Hmm.
Um, we couldn't find the pin on Meadow Lane. There was one on the survey map, but we couldn't find it. There were a lot of leaves and stuff there. So we had a, a little bit of a hard time figuring out what the line would be, kind of going in the westerly direction from Meadow Lane. Near that house lot, there was a small. Like a compost bin there, it was a wooden bin with a lot of old. Compost in it, didn't look like it was something they were actively using anymore, but you could see that from the house lot. It was, there was like a little bit of a clear path that went up to that, and the question is, should we bother to? Try to define that line better and ask them to, if they're on town property, if we should ask them to remove that compost bin? Um, or not at this point?
Maybe you wanna go out with a metal detector, see if you can find the pin?
Now, that would be helpful. Do you know of anybody that has one?
Um, hmm, um.
You think Joe Philippe would?
Yeah, Joe might have one, or uh, I don't know if, I, I think Ralph was talking to me one time about a metal detector. I don't know if he still has one or not.
Hmm.
I'm sure Ralph.
The pin near the road, um, we, we can get a pretty, pretty good idea where that one was. Because there was that uh, pre-existing uh, stone wall that. Um, showed a previous uh, boundary line where the two town-owned pieces were merged together.
Uh huh.
Do you know where I be, Kathy?
Yeah.
Um, so it should be in line with that stone wall, um, pretty close to Meadow Lane. But then being able to mark that and then also finding the next corner would be. Um, how we would kinda find out if that, that compost bin was with, uh, which side of the line it was on.
Hmm. So you think we could find the pin on Meadow Lane if we're?
I, I just think that uh, the location of it, whether it's even there anymore or not, um. We could get pretty close um, on that corner. It's the one out in the woods that. Um, we're having more trouble.
Yeah.
You know, because the app, you know, kinda shows it in the middle of the woods, so we don't really have anything to go by.
Yep, yep, yeah, there's, I don't believe there's a pin in the woods on that corner. Um, that kind of goes behind them, the house lots. Um, well, maybe you think it's something to just revisit in the spring when there's. Less leaves on the ground or? What do you think?
Uh, I guess maybe we could just keep an eye on it, um, you know, because. A compost bin that's not being used anymore is fairly harmless, but if there was, you know, new development.
Yep.
Certainly that would be something to keep our eyes at, open for.
Okay, yeah, or if somebody started to try to use their ATVs going up there or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah, it was, it certainly wasn't disturbing the forest in any way, I mean, it, there was not really an actual trail to it, it just, you could see that. There was a little bit of like an open area there that seemed like somebody may have used it as a little path in the past. So. Okay, um, Jackie, would, I think we kinda talked about this, but would you, when you have some time, would you write that up as a monitoring visit? Do you still have one of those monitoring forms?
Yeah, I do. Yeah, I haven't gotten the chance to do it yet, but I will.
Oh, okay, great, I really appreciate that.
Yep.
Okay. All right, well, that concludes our special meeting, and um, I'll just say this, I'm not sure that we have a lot. Um, that we all gonna, that we would need to meet for on the twentieth, so if. Things stay light like this, I might just cancel that meeting, but I certainly would let you guys know ahead of time. So.
Okay.
All right, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Great job, great job, you guys.
Patty, is that your motion? Patty says, that's it, I'm outta here, baby.
No, so, yeah, it's so impressive, your knowledge, um, motion, yes, motion.
Actually, before we do that, Patty, because you came out with us, what was your impression overall, or what? What did, what was your takeaway from all of this?
Totally impressed, I was amazed. I, I was so glad to be there and just hear everything. Yeah, thanks, it was, it was amazing.
Well, we're so glad that, you know, it's a learning experience for all of us. And that's why, you know, it's nice to take these opportunities and be out there with resource people. You know, if you have an opportunity to be out there with a forester, you know, I, you know, I'm so glad, you know, Jackie's with us. Um, and, you know, the inland wetlands has, you know, uh, soil scientists or something out. When they take their walks, it's really helpful to be out in the field sometimes and learn a little bit more each time.
Yeah, sorry, I missed all the fun.
Yeah, well, you'll be on planning and zoning when this comes up, so you'll be ahead of the game.
Are you trying to uh, tell me which way to vote?
No. Not at all, I just, just, you've had a preview, how's that?
Yeah, that's uh, good, well, what usual, well, yeah. Cause usually people ask, well, what do I think, and, you know, I can, I can certainly. Uh, fill them in what uh, what our position was and why.
Uh huh. All right, on that again, um, Patty, I'm putting you down as uh, first off with adjourning, who wants to second it?
I'll second.
Okay, all right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, all right, so moved, and it is now seven fifty-two. Sorry, I didn't note the time when we started, I'm assuming it was probably around seven ten or something by the time we finally got going, so.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, have a good night, everyone, and a good week.
Okay. Merry Christmas.
Yes, same here.